Paramount City Council is now called to order. May I have roll call of members, please?
Councilmember Ginn. Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Here.
Mayor Martinez.
Here.
Are there any city council comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Well, we do not have any public comment updates, but we do have one public comment card for today, and that's from Andrea Crowe, our local librarian. And she'd like to address the council about some library events coming up. Andrea?
Hello.
Hi Andrea.
Hi. Mayor Martinez, councilmembers in the city of Paramount. We have three special events this week at Paramount Library. MCMO will be on-site teaching children ages seven to 12 how to make a geometric lantern on Thursday, February 21st at 4:00 p.m. On Saturday, February 23rd, we have two events. At 10:00 a.m., adults can get assistance with how to use their smartphones and tablets. At 2:00 p.m., children ages five to 12 can learn the science behind magic tricks. Each child will learn to make their own -- will make their own magic trick to take home. For more information on all of our library events and services, you can always visit our website, LACountyLibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you Andrea. Okay, item one, old business. The annual review of the city council permit for live entertainment. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This is an annual review of the live entertainment permit for the Boulevard Cocktails Bar on Alondra Boulevard. The permit was issued by the council almost four years ago. The code does require us to do an annual review of live entertainment permits. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Public Safety Director, Ms. Adriana Lopez, to handle the item. Adriana?
Thank you, John. I don't see my PowerPoint on the monitor. Do you guys see it? Okay, great. Well, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Like John mentioned, this is an annual review of the live entertainment permit for Boulevard Cocktails Bar, which is located at 8410 Alondra Boulevard. It is owned by Mr. Gary Zinger and Mr. Jorge Cabrera. Cocktail Boulevard is -- I'm sorry. Boulevard Cocktails is licensed by ABC for a type 48 license, which allows for the sale of beer, wine, and a full line of distilled spirits for onsite consumption. As John mentioned, at its July 7th, 2015 meeting, the city council did adopt Resolution 15018, which approved live entertainment at Boulevard Cocktails. As part of the approval process and review process, the last compliance review for the live entertainment permit was conducted on February 6th, 2018. And tonight's presentation is the annual review for all the documented activities from February 6th, 2018 to February 11th, 2019. Boulevard Cocktails is authorized to have hosted and self-service karaoke on Fridays and Saturdays between the hours of 7:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. From February 6th, 2018 to February 11th, 2019, we had six law enforcement responses that were related to the business establishment. And I'll go into more detail about the responses. Here's a summary of the calls that were placed. On Saturday, February -- I'm sorry, March 31st of 2018, there was a call that was placed of a fight disturbance. Although we've had six calls, none of them have resulted in a police report. The first one that occurred, which was a fight disturbance, it was a male adult that was not allowing the informant to leave the location. The female informant was intoxicated, and the male suspect was gone before the arrival of the deputies. However, once the deputies conducted their initial investigation, there was no evidence of a crime. The next two, which is Monday, April 9th of 2018, at 2:40 -- 2:57, and the following one, which occurred on the same date, at 3:26, were related and were placed by the same person. If you note, it is early hours, and the business was closed, and there was no live entertainment. Both calls were placed by the same person, and the caller once again was intoxicated, and there was no evidence of a crime. Since then, the person or the caller is no longer allowed to enter the establishment. On Tuesday, April 10th of 2018, this was a business disturbance, and it did not occur during the live entertainment hours. And this was a call that was placed of a male adult that was bothering other customers inside the bar. This call also did not lead to a police report, and the call was placed by the business owner. On Thursday, November 15th, 2018, once again, it was a disturbance violation. It was a male who was refusing to leave the bar. And this was again placed by the business owner, and it was outside of the live entertainment. And the last call, or the last call that you see here, it was an observation by a deputy that there was a catering truck on the business. The analysis is that staff believes that the business has been in compliance with their live entertainment conditions in the past year, and staff has not received any complaints or any issues from the adjacent residents or businesses. In addition, Public Safety has reviewed the security surveillance systems at Boulevard Cocktails with the bar manager, and the surveillance system is operational, and no issues were detected. Also, the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department has confirmed that Boulevard Cocktail has been in compliance by providing a uniformed security guard during the live entertainment hours as part of their conditions of approval. So it is recommended that the city council receive and file the report with the stipulation that the city staff conduct an annual review of Boulevard Cocktail's live entertainment permit. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Adriana?
Make motion to receive and file.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn. Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes.
Item two, three-month review of city council permit for live entertainment at La Diosa de los Moles, 8335 Rosecrans Avenue. You may have a staff report.
Yes, you may, Madam Mayor. This item is very similar to the previous item that you just heard. It's a review of another live entertainment permit. This one, however, is more recent, having been approved in November of last year. And this one is at a restaurant. Well, the previous item that you just heard was at a bar. With that, again, I'll turn it over to Adriana Lopez, our Public Safety Director, who will go over this item. Adriana?
Yes, thank you, John. Once again, good evening. Like John mentioned, this is a three-month review of the live entertainment permit for La Diosa de los Moles Restaurant. And the restaurant is located at 8335 Rosecrans Avenue. The restaurant is owned by Mr. Juan Gutierrez, who is also the applicant for the live entertainment permit. The restaurant is licensed by ABC for a type 41 sales license of beer and wine for onsite consumption. And it's November 6th. The city council adopted Resolution 18031, which approved live entertainment at the restaurant. As part of the approval process, the city council asked Public Safety staff to conduct a three-month review of the live entertainment, which we're doing tonight. Live entertainment format that's been approved for the restaurant is for a trio, and it's approved for Thursday through Sunday between the hours of 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. From November 8th, 2018 through February 11th, 2019, we have not had any law enforcement responses to the restaurant. And Public Safety has not received any concerns or complaints regarding the restaurant or any type of noise coming from the performance. Public Safety staff feels that there are the businesses in compliance because we haven't received, once again, any complaints or issues. And also, we, in talking to the business manager, as well as the business owner of the live entertainment, has been successful, and the business has also desires of adding mariachi music in the near future. It is recommended that the city council receive and file the report with the stipulation that staff conduct a six-month compliance review of the restaurant. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Adriana?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn. Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Item three, all report, like a state of update, AB 626. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. Recently, there's been a variety of legislation proposed, and in some cases, actually approved by the governor. This limits local authority over land use. I've mentioned it to you in previous weekly memos. This next item that you're about to hear is a perfect example of this. AB 626, it allows individuals in residential zones to basically open up a restaurant in their home. Now, there's our certain health department requirements that the resident would need to follow. But once that's complete, they're basically free to start serving meals from their own home. So with that, we just wanted to bring you up to speed on what this legislation and this new bill is all about, or this new law, actually. And also, to give you an idea where the county health department is in regards to this. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant City Manager, Kevin Chun, who will handle the item. Kevin?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. As you may have heard, last year, then-Governor Brown signed AB 626 into law, allowing for what's known as microenterprise home kitchen operations, which are also known as MECOs. MECOs are restricted food service facilities that essentially allow for small restaurants at private residences. MECOs would be regulated by the California Retail Food Code, which provides state sanitation standards for retail food. The intent of this legislation was to provide opportunities for small food businesses from home and eliminating barriers to enter the local food economy. And just for clarification, MECOs shouldn't be confused with cottage food operations, which allows producers of cottage foods like breads, pies, coffee, honey, and jams to produce and sell such goods from their homes. The distinction is that cottage food operators act more like a store, whereas MECOs operate as restaurants. MECOs would be limited to serving 30 individual meals per day and 60 individual meals per week. All such meals must be prepped, cooked, and served on the same day, and may be consumed at the home locations or picked up by customers or delivered. Only one full-time equivalent employee would be allowed. Such operations could only generate up to $50,000 in annual gross sales. And the food could only be sold directly to customers. So in other words, it wouldn't be allowed for wholesale or to be sold by other retailers. Under this legislation, the county Department of Public Health would be the permitting and enforcement agency for MECOs. Also, the county's approval of MECOs would then automatically authorize the permitting of MECOs in contract cities like Paramount. The city could, however, still require a business license in order for MECOs to operate within Paramount. And as mentioned in a Friday memo to the council last month, and as John reiterated now, AB 626 is another legislative act of the state that erodes local control for cities throughout California. In this case, MECOs would take away our local land use and planning decision-making over whether home restaurant operations should be allowed in Paramount. Because of this concern, the county is working with other county health departments in California and the author of AB 626, who is Eduardo Garcia, who represents Riverside and Imperial Counties, to develop amendments, including a provision allowing cities to opt in or opt out of allowing for MECOs. It's anticipated that this possible cleanup legislation may be included in an urgency bill for Governor Newsom to consider in June of this year. At this point, due to the uncertainty of the final provisions for MECOs, the county has postponed its consideration for authorizing MECOs until all regulatory language can be captured under the anticipated urgency bill. As a result, the county also recommends holding off on any independent actions by cities on MECOs until the new legislation is adopted. MECOs may be operating in other cities right now, but currently -- but aren't currently allowed in contract cities within LA County. And again, this will not be allowed until the county approves the MECOs. So again, we know that you may have heard about MECOs in press coverage or through your counterparts in other cities. But the city will continue to monitor the MECO situation for now until we have further guidance from the county. And we hope to be able to update you later this year on this matter. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So what actual role are we playing? Anything -- I mean, I can see so many problems with this.
Yeah.
And so how involved are we? Are we taking any proactive measures, or?
Yeah, at this point, it's really unclear what specifically the city's role will be. I mean, as the legislation is written, the county Department of Health, Public Health, again, would be responsible for permitting and for enforcing the law. So as of now, my understanding is we wouldn't necessarily have a role. But because it's still somewhat fluid and amendments are being proposed, it kind of remains to be seen exactly what role we'll have.
Well, have we taken any proactive measures with our supervisor at the county? You know, I'm assuming with just the things that I see here that this is something that, you know, would be a really big problem. I mean, off the top, I see for us parking, you know, huge in neighborhoods. Already, people can't park anywhere close to their homes. And you're going to allow that? I can see, you know, issues with people being able to eat there and operating a facility like this. So I mean, are we letting them know how we feel about this? Are we waiting for some direction from council on this?
Yes, we -- I appreciate your input on that. And those are some things that we could certainly take back to Supervisor Han and her staff. But beyond those things, which are, you know, definite concerns, also is the fact that while these would be operating like restaurants, my understanding is that they wouldn't have the same standards like, you know, grading cards. So, you know, that's --
Like what?
The grade.
Oh, grades, yeah.
So that's another issue for the public as well.
And you did mention that if it were to be allowed, that they could be required to have a business license. Would our business license, because we have restrictions on what type of business can get a business license, have to meet certain criteria? Would that give us any leverage there?
I'm not sure that we would have any leverage there. I think if a -- one of these operators came to us with a county permit at that point in time, when the county authorized it, if they came to us with a county permit, I think we wouldn't have much, you know, choice but to issue a business license.
Well, I would like to, if you can get a consensus from the council, either in a memo or here, have the staff put together all of the objections that I would assume we would raise to this and be proactive about it before, you know, it comes to us so that the supervisor knows, you know, the type of burden that it would put on our community ahead of time as part of their consideration.
Sure, and then we can also check with our counterparts to see what they're doing with the league of California cities, to see what they're suggesting as well. And we can definitely put together a letter.
Kevin, have we had any residents inquire about this?
Not that I know of. I'm looking at Mr. Carver, no. Not as of yet.
You know, a lot of people are already doing this type of thing, selling prep meals now that this house kick is big going on. So I mean, this AB 623, although interesting, has been going on for a long time. There's a lot of people already doing it.
Sure.
So just to keep that in mind, too.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. But, you know, out in your -- now it's a restaurant. You can operate out there as a restaurant instead of, you know. Yeah, there's people who have little home cottage businesses that, you know, I know a couple of people who sell chips and salsa and tamales, things like that. But I think that this, like, really opens up permission and the floodgates for some real problems, especially when it can operate as a restaurant with up to 30 people a day.
Right. Well, and, you know, all these things that you bring up. I mean, these are exactly the reasons how, you know, bills coming out of Sacramento like this, you know, erode our local control.
Yeah.
You know, we're up to us. I can't speak for you, but, you know, staff would have a lot of concern bringing some type of local, you know, ordinance allowing for these kinds of things. So they're forcing our hand. It's not necessarily something we would bring to you.
That's why I think we should be proactive and give the supervisor our arguments ahead of time so that, you know, when she looks at it, she has that consideration in mind of how it's going to impact us.
Sure.
I agree with that very much.
You have consensus. Okay, item number four, traffic control plan for Friday night farmer's markets, street closures.
Yes, Madam Mayor. A couple of months ago, the city council approved an agreement between the city and a vendor to start up our Friday night market. We're excited to get this going, and our first night market is less than two weeks away. It's going to be on March 1st. But before we get -- we got too far ahead of ourselves. We checked in with our Joint Power Insurance Authority as to what is required for a traffic control plan. And with that, Adriana Figueroa, our Public Works Director, is going to tell us more about this. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, as John indicated, the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority, or the JPIA, recommended the preparation and approval of a traffic control plan to be prepared by the city's traffic engineer to ensure proper street closures and relevant temporary traffic signage is used during the event, which will also allow us the sign immunity. The attached traffic control plan -- let me get to this page. Was prepared by the city's contract traffic engineer, well done engineering, and it specifically identifies the closure location, vehicle ingress and egress points for businesses in the area, and the setup of other pertinent traffic signage for the event. As you can see in front of you, Paramount Boulevard is on the right-hand side. It runs there, thank you, north and south. And Jackson Street, it's right in the middle, running east and west. The closure -- I'm going to jump onto the next page because it's easier to see it on this other page. The closure, again, Paramount Boulevard on the right-hand side and Jackson there in the middle, would be -- the closure would be for Jackson Street west of Paramount Boulevard and east of Vermont Avenue. Again, the attached traffic control plan calls out for both the east and westbound lanes of Jackson Street to be closed. And -- but the alley located just east of Vermont Avenue, just close to that alley. The alley will remain open to vehicles and will allow for the, again, ingress and egress of residents and local businesses located along the north side of Jackson Street. Recreation staff has begun outreach to all of these affected businesses to inform them of the closures. As for the north and southbound traffic on Paramount Boulevard, vehicles will not be impacted by the closure of Jackson Street west of the intersection other than those wishing to turn left or right going westbound onto Jackson Street. Detour signage, of course, will be properly posted. And at this time, it is recommended that the city council approve the proposed traffic control plan for the monthly Friday night market in the designated section of the city's downtown. That concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Adriana?
Why can't they go eastbound on Jackson?
Sorry?
I mean, why can't they go westbound? Make a right on Jackson.
Make a right on to -- going, I'm sorry, going --
You know, you're going down towards all the vendors, right? But what about on the other side of Paramount Boulevard?
Oh, they can go.
That's going to be open?
Right. That will be open.
That'll be open.
Yes, that will be open, going eastbound. I'm sorry, I meant eastbound, I guess, if you're coming from Vermont.
I'll move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn.
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Item number five, resolution number 19003. Staff report, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. For decades, Paramount has been part of the county's workforce development territory. Because of its massive size, the county divides its workforce development territory into several different areas. Then they contract out with a variety of nonprofit groups and assign a nonprofit to the different cities with little or no input from individual cities. So you basically, your assigned nonprofit group then provides important services like job training and employment services to residents and businesses in our community. As you may recall, SASFA was the nonprofit service that served Paramount for a number of years. Well, in 2017, the county decided to realign their territories, and once again, without our input, they took us out of SASFA's territory and placed us in another nonprofit areas, territory. We found that since this transition, the service provided by the new group has not been up to the quality of service that we're used to for our community. The problem is, this isn't the first time that's happened. It's happened on two other occasions in the past. So to avoid the lapses in service and to gain more local control, we want to leave the county and join a local group of cities that run their own workforce development board. So the presentation that you're about to hear is a tag-team-style type of presentations. First, we'll start off with David Johnson, our Community Services and Recreation Director. He'll give us a little more details about what I just told you. And then we'll turn it over to Ms. Yolanda Castro, who's in the audience with us tonight from the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board, to explain the details about SELICO. And then, Dave, we'll take it back to wrap up things for your consideration. And with that, we do have some other staff members in the audience tonight, as well as board members, that are joining us here tonight from SELACO. So with that, we'll start off with David Johnson, who will handle the first part of the presentation. David?
Thank you, John. Mayor and councilmembers. So again, as John mentioned, we will be looking at our application to join SELICO. So again, as John mentioned, there are a variety of these job retention, training centers, placement centers throughout the county. The ones that are under the LA County Workforce Development Board, they control the funding and operations of these centers, and they serve about 58 cities in the county. Now, there are independent workforce development boards. They receive funding not from the county, but directly from the state. They operate the same kind of job recruitment and placement and training centers that the LA County Workforce Development Board does. And we'll be looking at SELICO, which is the Southeast Area Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board. So what we're looking at here is, we've been part of the LA County system for a long time. Like John mentioned, we most currently were with SASFA. And they actually operate a training center in town and started in 2006. But they were our center to go to prior to 2006 as well. We did get reassigned to Hub Cities in 2017. And what we're looking at doing now is actually leaving the county system and joining an independent workforce development board, which is SELACO, SELICO. And that's what Resolution 19003 is dealing with. This just shows you a map on the left of LA County and the various regions that they've broken their workforce development boards up into. If you look to the one to the right, so you see that green area? That is -- that's served by SASFA. So that's in the Whittier area. That's who we used to belong to. We now belong to that light blue area, which is served by Hub Cities. And that gray area excluding Signal Hill and Long Beach are all the SELICO cities. So that's the, that's the region we're looking to join. Now, as John mentioned, this is a lot of it due with our dissatisfaction with being part of the LA County system. When we did, we, actually, we had a pretty good run with SASFA when they had their, their site in town. And then that transition went to hub cities, it kinda went silent. So we, they, they did not reach out to us. Eventually, after about six months, we reached out to them, said, okay, we want these services back, the same way we had with SASFA. So we did reach out, we made connections with the chamber, we made connections, obviously, with us, and the school district, and then it went silent again. So that created a great deal of concern for us, that we're not really a priority. In fact, we're, if you look on their website, we're still not even listed as one of their client cities on their website. So we, we have this problem with inconsistent services. It all speaks to a lack of local control. And as John mentioned, this has now happened twice. So 1999, we looked at joining SELICO. Improvements were made with the county system. It, it started to deteriorate again, and so 2005, we looked at going to SELICO again. They made improvements to the system, and then, and here we are. We get, we got transferred to hub cities with no input from the city, no control by the city. And again, that creates a bit of a problem for us. The advantages of being part of SELICO, we have a seat at the table. This speaks to our issue of local control. The mayor would be able to appoint a member of the board of directors at SELICO. That gives us the input that we've been desiring. It also puts us in alignment with all, so all those great, those cities that are part of SELICO, those are all Supervisor Han cities. So this would put us in alignment with those other cities who are part of Supervisor Han's district. These are also all the same cities that you're all very familiar with, that we have a lot of economic and political partnerships with. And so we already have those advantages when we join SELICO. And so what we're also really looking for is also consistency in service. So when you're part of that big, large county system, it ebbs and flows depending on how much they wanna pay attention to you. With SELICO, we would have a higher level of consistent service, particularly because we have a seat at the table. And then what resolution 19003 does, it authorizes the city to join the Southeast Area Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board. And I'll turn it over. We have in the audience the executive director of SELICO, Yolanda Castro, and she's gonna go through a little bit of background about what SELICO does.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you for giving me this opportunity to share a little bit about our organization. At the request of your staff, I'm here to give you a quick presentation about our structure. I wanna apologize, Murphy's Rule, you wake up to do a big presentation, you end up with a bad cold. So I'm going to have a tag team, Sandra Michen in the audience. I'm gonna give you some background and structure, and then she's gonna talk about our services. So again, my name is Yolanda Castro. I'm the executive director of the Southeast Los Angeles County, thank you, Workforce Development Board, also known as the SELICO Web. The SELICO Web is a private nonprofit corporation. The organization operates under a joint powers agreement among the cities of Artesia, Bellflower, Cerritos, Downey, Hawaiian Gardens, Lakewood, and Norwalk. And here today to support us in this presentation are a few of our members of our policy board. We have councilmember Jeff Wood from the city of Lakewood. We also have Mayor Pro Tem Blanca, oh, Blanca Pacheco has not arrived yet, I'm sorry. Mayor Sunny Santa Inez with the city of Bellflower is also here today. And these are two of the members who help give guidance and oversight to our organization. SELICO was established in 1983 to administer workforce development programs funded through the Job Training Partnership Act, known as JTPA. A little bit about our structure, as I mentioned, we have a SELICO Policy Board, which represents an official, an elected official from each of our seven cities. We also have a Workforce Development Board. The board represents 24 directors, 51% representing business, private business. Each city who sits on our policy board or is part of our joint power agreements assigns two business representatives from their city to sit on our workforce board. This board, along with representatives from labor, economic development, education, community-based organizations, Department of Rehab, Unemployment Development Department, EDD, and other key stakeholders, meet on a, every other month to give guidance and oversee our operation on a, on a monthly basis. I, as the executive director, work in partnership with these two boards to ensure that we are delivering services effectively in our region. To give you a better picture about our vision and our goals as a workforce board, I thought I'd highlight some of the key laws that have impacted workforce development. Workforce development programs have existed since the Civil War. But I'm only gonna go back to 1962. Don't quite remember anything before that. But there's, there's four or five laws up there that have influenced how our system operates, from the Manpower Development Act to the Comprehensive Employment and Training Act, the Job Training Partnership Act, the Workforce Innovation, Investment Act of 1998, and the law that we currently operate under is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act of 2014. Currently, SELICO is designated as a seven-city service delivery area. However, prior to the, the passing of the Job Training Partnership Act, we were under the, the structure of the county. We were considered a prime agent agency. So the funding would come from the state, to the county, and then to a prime agent. And when JTPA passed, it gave cities the opportunity to move away from the county and become their own service delivery area. So six of our cities joined, developed their own service area. And then when we were established in 1983, we added the city of Artesia. So now we're a seven-city area, and we get our funding directly from the state. So we're no longer under the direction of the county. As David mentioned, you have, he mentioned hub cities and SASFA. Those are two organizations who are still getting their funding from the county system. That's what makes SELICO unique, is because we have direct control over the funding that comes to our area. So we've been established for 35 years. And SELICO's mission is to provide personalized services that foster the progress of employers and encourage the potential of individuals. We believe in building a strong workforce for our region. We secure flexible and innovative and entrepreneurial staff who can use technology to help stimulate the development of innovation in our area. We link individuals to training they need to gain self-sufficiency. And we collaborate with employers to enhance the economic vitality and the human resources of our communities. To meet our mission, the vision for our system is to build on-ramps to our America Job Center system of partner services. AJCC is the America Job Center of California. The state of California has delay, has developed an electronic labor exchange system. And we're, we're being creative in using that system to help build on-ramps throughout our communities to access our services. Because we know that everybody won't walk into a building. But if we can teach our partners how to access that service, or teach our job seekers, they can access our services electronically. We also believe that we need to identify career planning strategies that support career pathways to livable and sustainable wages. We work with our education partners, with local employers, to look at ways to build or access or identify career pathways that can prove to be beneficial for our job seekers. We have a network of partners who support our job seekers to overcome the barriers to employment. SELICO is focused on placing and getting people to the job, but a lot of customers have barriers that we can address. So we rely heavily on partners within our system to help us meet those issues. We engage with local employers to assess need and identify growth sectors in our region. We increase training and employment opportunities for targeted populations. There are many individuals who can't access employment. The economy's good right now. People who can work are working, but there are individuals who are coming out of the prison system. There are individuals with disabilities, monolingual individuals who need specific help to get to where they need to be. So we target those populations in an effort to get them into a career pathway. We wanna increase job placement and retention services. So not only do we place them on the job, but after, a year after their place, we continue to do follow-up to ensure that they're getting the support they need to stay employed. And we believe strongly in collaborating locally and regionally to meet all these objectives. We have local control, but we know that if we can collaborate with our local partners and other workforce boards in our system, that we could be more successful in building a strong workforce system in this region. So with the support of our local officials and workforce board, the SELICO Web has established a solid foundation for effective administration of workforce funds and is successfully submitting established state performance standards. We are expected to meet performance standards in order to continue to receive our, receive our funding. We have also established a network of over 30 education and social service partner agencies that work together with us to ensure that our customers are being served, whether they're the job seeker or the employer. This collaboration is known as the LA, the Southeast LA Collaboration Committee Network, known as CCN. I'm very proud to be part of the SELICO Web system. We are one of the premier models of locally-based career services and business development programs. In 2000, as we were developing our organization over the last 35 years, we were acknowledged by the Department of Labor in a publication that they printed called "Baldridge Principles Self-Assessment and Organizational Reinvention: A Case Study in Quality." In 2014, we were also acknowledged as a high-performing board by the California Workforce Development, Workforce Investment System. There are seven workforce boards in the region. LA County is one of the workforce boards. You have the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board, and you have five other, six other workforce boards who provide services throughout the area. So we were proud to have received the acknowledgement of being a high-performing board. To deliver our system, I apologize if this is so small, there is a copy of it in your packet. But to ensure that our, we have the proper oversight for our system, we have our policy board, we have a director of the policy board who supports them in putting agendas together, and we have our workforce board. You have me as the executive director, and we have directors who operate, to see the day-to-day operation. I'd like to have some of those directors stand up. We have Margine Clements, who's here, she oversees all our business engagement services. We have Sandra Michen, who oversees compliance and partner, strategic partnerships. So we have a strong team that's focused on the specific delivery of our areas. We also have a one-stop manager who oversees the partners who are committed to working with our system. So when it comes to delivering the services that we operate, I'd like to invite Sandra Michen to come up and talk about our service delivery system.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As Yolanda mentioned, the SELICO Workforce Development Board, with the implementation of the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act, took the challenge posed by the state and created not only an America's Job Center of California, but created a system of partnerships to deliver and address multiple services and address multiple barriers in a leveraged format. So we have our AJCC, but we created a system where, through an electronic referral process, we share information, we co-case manage with mandated partners under the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. Those partners include adult ed, community colleges, Department of Public Social Services, Job Corps, Youth Build, and Housing Authority. At our AJCC, the SELICO Workforce Development Board also took the opportunity with WEOLA to create an integrated service delivery system. When a customer walks in through our doors, they are served seamlessly by partnership. So based on their need, based on where they are in their job search or in the need of upgrade of skills, they are referred to the appropriate partner to address multiple barriers, again, not knowing who's necessarily serving them, but serving them in a partnership. They'd walk in through our career center, through our concierge, they would be assessed, and then either start at the AJCC partner, being served directly by SELICO staff, or being referred to a partner agency that also provides services that are in alignment with upgrading skills or addressing barriers to employment. The SELICO adult services, as mentioned by Yolanda, are provided directly by the SELICO Workforce Development Board. We do not contract out our services. We also deliver services based on priority of service, prioritizing individuals that are veterans, basic skill deficient, justice-involved, disabled, and public assistance recipients. Our services include workshops, job search assistance, paid work experience, on-the-job training, classroom training, and direct job placement assistance. And the supportive services to address any other barriers that might not be directly served. We also offer business services, a huge array of business services, such as no-cost staffing assistance, job postings, assessment to identify needs in any key areas for assistance, customized training under the employment training panel. Currently, we are the only workforce development board that successfully runs an ETP program, which stands for Employment Training Panel. They address specifically training to upgrade skills for companies that need to upgrade the skills of current incumbent workers. We also have a business resource center that helps build a business, or it helps entrepreneurs start a new business. And customized trainings. Under our youth services, we offer 80% of all youth funds to serve at-risk youth, ranging from ages 18 to 24. We also run a county-sponsored Earn and Learn program, which offers work experience opportunities year-round to students that have multiple barriers, such as being part of the foster system, justice-involved, public assistance students, or students that are in danger of dropping out of high school. We also continue to seek and develop partner capacity in an effort to enhance the delivery of youth services in our local cities. And I believe Yolanda's gonna talk a little bit more about our local and regional strategic workforce plan.
So as part of being a workforce system in California, we're required to put together local and regional plans that show how we will deliver services within the region and how we align with the state's strategic plan. We, that, a lot of that effort is focused this coming, we're in the process of a public comment with our current plan that's available for anyone to review. But the key focus moving forward is looking at ways that we're going to serve the justice-involved. The California region has a large percentage of individuals coming out of the prison system. And California has set aside $35 million for us to work with to address that issue and help these individuals get to effective employment, which includes educating employers on the value of hiring the justice-involved. With, with this presentation, what I'd like to do is have our policy board members, and I, Jeff Wood, the chair of our policy board, Sunny Inez, Sunny Inez, also with our policy board, and Blanca Pacheco. Today, the board took action to support the city's efforts to join our region. So they do have a letter, and I'd like to give them an opportunity to address that.
Mayor, members of the council, it's an honor to be here. Joining me is the vice chair of the SELICO Board, Sunny Santa Inez, mayor of the city of Bellflower, Blanca Pacheco, Mayor Pro Tem of Downey, Renee Trevino from Artesia. We have four of the seven board members here. The one to show our commitment, we are so excited to have Paramount consider joining SELICO. And as Mr. Johnson said, day one, you will have a seat. One of you, we look forward to having you join us on the policy board, as well as your business owner. So at today's SELICO meeting, the board unanimously committed to having you join us. We look forward at the appropriate time to having each of our cities take the action to formally have you join us and to modify the joint powers, authority resolutions. So we are excited, we look forward to, to working with you and your city. And I think Yolanda and Sandra did an outstanding job in really highlighting the benefits of SELICO. And I know my colleagues up here are so excited, because our cities are very common. We do so much with the city of Paramount, that it just is a natural fit to have you be part of SELICO. And we're really excited and look forward to this opportunity. It's a great organization, I've been on the board since I got elected in 2000. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything. Sunny, your vice chair, do you wanna?
Let me just add, my name is Sunny Santa Inez, mayor of Bellflower, honorable mayor, and members of city council. I just wanted something that was missed during the presentation, which I think is very critical. Once, at least once a year, our executive director meets with the city manager. So that's one thing that can be added into the benefits of you joining, joining the SELICO Web. Because I'm sure that there's some, there's a lot of disconnect between the hub, in the hub, in the hub cities and in Paramount, where you have some kind of issues. It takes time for you to get those issues resolved. And I can guarantee you that if you have an issue, since you have not only one seat, you have seats on the table. You have a seat in the policy board, you have two seats in the development board. So if you have any issue, you can go to these representatives and get those issues resolved. So it, it's just kind of a manifestation of local control given to you by SELICO. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Blanca Pacheco, Mayor Pro Tem for the city of Downey. And I've actually been a, a member, or actually, the representative for our city for this workforce group. And it's been a pleasure working with them. So I know that whoever's selected, or whoever comes to the meetings, you'll, you'll truly enjoy being at the meeting, and you'll see how well your, your, you, the services are and, and how well your, your residents will, the services that will be provided to them are tremendous. And I think it would be a benefit, and as mentioned, all of us, we're in agreement to have you on board, and so we're excited, and that's why we're here today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Renee Trevino from the city of Artesia. I'm newly elected. But one of the discussions that I was a part of over the last couple of months is the various boards and commissions that the city appoints. And SELICO is a very outstanding organization. Today was my first meeting, good camaraderie amongst the cities. And that's really what we are looking for, is to help each other out, build those bonds. And together, we can certainly move a lot of things forward for our residents and constituents. So I really hope you consider this move, it'll be a positive one. Thank you so much.
And then we have the letter that, that we've signed, so I'll give it to, I guess, Mr. Johnson, and then he can give it to the clerk. Thank you very much, mayor. Councilmembers, we really look forward to working with you.
Thank you, board members, for attending our meeting. Thank you so much. Any questions, comments? Ms. Clements?
If you don't mind, we have, we're gonna go ahead and send it back to David for wrap-up.
Mr. Johnson?
Madam Mayor?
Thank you, John. Just a few comments more. So actually, John and I, at the invitation of Yolanda, we were able to go see the workforce center that they have in Cerritos. This is a wonderful facility, it's well-run, it is clean, it has all the services and resources that our community members can use. I also had the advantage, we met with Yolanda and Linda Johnson, and the board members that you see tonight. And so Linda Johnson, the Supervisor Han, is behind, does support us in this move. And the sense that you're getting here is that there's a partnership, there's a team here. You're reading that right. And this is a team that we are hoping to join, we want to join. want to join. So, our recommended action tonight is that the Council read by title only and adopt Resolution 19003.
Thank you, David. Ms. Lemmons?
I just wanted to say that I've worked with both of these organizations in my employment with the Chamber of Commerce, putting on job fairs. I worked with Selico and SASFA, and I was actually telling Margine, who I've known for 20-plus years, that I was very grateful to her because she put on the first job fair with me, and we've never matched one since. It was just outstanding. And I remember going back to you the second year, and you told me, "I'm sorry, we can't help you, you're not in our district," and we had to go with SASFA. So, I'm well aware that the services are outstanding, that you do a great job, and I'm thrilled that we have this opportunity. Thank you.
May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion, read by title only and adopt Resolution Number 19.003.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Giann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Item six, Resolution Number 19002. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, you may, Madam Mayor and Council. This next item involves our mid-year budget review. As you know, we adopt the budget in June, and then in February of each year, we take another look at it and make any adjustments that need to be made. So, this allows us to have a more accurate picture of what our revenues are. It also allows us to see where we need to add or adjust more money to areas of the budget where we think we may go over. The good news is that the revenue is up from the level that we had originally predicted to be at. This will help us to cover some cost overruns that we experienced through the year so far, and also allow us to add a few small but exciting one-time things to finish off the year. So, with that, I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Ms. Karina Lam, who will handle the report. Karina?
Thank you, John, for the introduction. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of the Council. I'll go directly into the report. This is a recap of our city finances in three major fund categories. First is a general fund, this is the fund the Council has the most discretion in spending. This fund is unrestricted. This is used to pay for most of all essential city services, including our police and sheriff's contracts, all maintenance and operations in public works, and special events and programs handled by recreation. At this time, general fund revenues are looking better, mainly because of the motor vehicle license fee increase. On the expenditure side, because of the addition of revenues and savings in expenditures, we're able to propose a number of additions to the current budget, which we'll go over later in the presentation. In addition, by using additional resources from CIP Reserve and Equipment Replacement Fund, we are presenting a balanced budget at this time. In the restrictive fund categories, it is including all the funds such as gas tax, STAR, MTA, transportation, and HUD funds. As its name stated, this fund has restrictions attached to it, so it only allows us to use it on specific projects, and what we do is we typically save up the funds and don't spend it all in one year. So, it is not uncommon from previous years, when we save up from previous years and use it in current year. In fiscal year 19, the $2.9 million deficit simply represents that we spent previous year's saving for eligible projects this year. In other words, it is a timing difference. Lastly, for water fund, we're proposing a deficit to the tune of $75,000. The primary source of income in a general fund is sales tax, which is about one-third of the total general fund. In fiscal year 19, we're budgeting $8 million total in sales tax, which is an increase from fiscal year 18's actual, also a minor increase from our original budget prediction. As we heavily rely on fuels, the increase in sales tax here is mainly related to fuel transactions, also reflects the retail establishments that opened in the past year. A question has often asked, how do we get sales tax in the city? Well, sales tax is generated from retail point-of-sales, such as merchandise purchased at a store, gasoline pump at a gas station, or hot food served at a restaurant. Out of the 9.5% sales tax you pay, city gets 1%. Now, if you look at this 10-year chart, it is clear that sales tax is impacted by the economy, as sales tax hit the bottom during recession in 2010. We have seen sales tax rebound, this is really little growth over the years if you look at the 10-years chart. Part of the reason for the little growth is that there is a leakage in sales tax in Paramount. What we find out is that a lot of our residents actually shop outside of Paramount, therefore sales tax are not being captured, we're not keeping sales tax local. Nonetheless, we do see a rebound in sales tax since 2010, and we surely hope that the upward trend will continue. Next is MVLF, which is Motor Vehicle License Fee. This is the second-largest source of income in the general fund. MVLF is generated by vehicle registration fees. When a vehicle owner register his or her car with DMV, city gets a portion of it. Here's the trend for the last 10 years. As you can see, since the recession in 2010, MVLF has steadily going up, mainly due to new cars being purchased, hence higher registration fees. So, the good news is it's an upward trend, however, we've gotten data that new car sales have plummeted this past year. When cars are aging, registration fees will be reduced, and so are our MVLF revenues. Therefore, we're anticipating a drop in revenues in MVLF this next fiscal year. Another risk to these revenue sources currently protected by legislation. However, if the state can find a loophole like they have done in the past, we are at a risk of losing this revenue once again. This is a utility users tax 10-year chart. Utility users tax is also a part of the general fund, and if you look at this chart, you can see that back in 2016, Metro P really helped bring in additional funding. The additional funding really helped cover some of the loss of funding from the dissolution of redevelopment. We're happy to report revenues have stabilized these past couple of years, and we're budgeting approximately $3.6 million in a year. Here's a review of our revenues comparing numbers at approved and mid-year. The red bar shows the original estimates at approved, and the yellow bars represent our revised numbers. For the general fund, there's overall increase of about $280,000 increase for the year to close to $26.7 million. Other than the minor increase in sales tax, there is also increase in MVLF when compared to approved. For the restrictive funds, we're experiencing some decreases in various areas, such as gas tax and a traffic grant. The traffic grants, we use it to pay for crossing guard services. When we experience a decrease in those funding, that means general fund is paying for the rest. However, there are some increases in other areas I want to report to you. One of which is a new metro grant that we have been awarded recently for an open street event. The total revenue budget under restrictive funds is about $10.6 million. Lastly, for the water fund, we see our water consumption has been stabilized, and we're projecting the same revenues at this time, approximately $8 million. Here is the expenditure comparison for the three fund types between approved and mid-year. For the general fund, we budgeted close to $27 million at approved. At this time, we're budgeting about the same. Similar to previous year, we're seeing some personnel vacancies across all departments, so we see some savings there. Also, as the recall election did not materialize, we captured additional savings, which allows us to propose additions to the budget at this time. The new item totaling $370,000 will be discussed in the following few slides. As for restrictive funds, we're budgeting about $13.7 million in a year. The increase in expenditure mainly reflects the addition of an open streets event, which is funded by a metro grant. Also, we're adding $60,000 for an update of the downtown design guidelines, using the general plan funds that we have accumulated over the years. Also, using the art funds, we're proposing to use $45,000 for Latina Arts Foundation as a grant match. As for water funds, we're able to revise the water production cost down, so we are budgeting close to $15.8 million in expenditures. At this time, we are proposing an increase of $370,000 new expenditures within the general fund. You can see the highlights in the next few slides. For items that are reflected in the budget, we had, we have been approved by the Council in the past, such as the cost allocation plan and economic development-related expenditures are not listed here. Other increases include, first highlight is the monthly around-town publications. As you know, we have been trying to better communicate with the residents. The monthly around-town, along with social media, have been a great success in recent months, so we wanted to continue this platform to serve our residents, and the additional cost is about $46,000. Next is a public opinion poll. Many years ago, we surveyed our residents on restaurant choices. In that survey, IHOP scored the highest, which ultimately became a reality in town. Also, a few years ago, we surveyed our residents before putting the utility users tax on our ballot. It's been a number of years since we conducted a survey, so we feel that this will be a good time to do it again and hear from our residents. The cost is about $30,000. Next is a comprehensive study, 1982 versus 2018. We're proposing to hire a firm to conduct a study that compares where we are today to where we were when the Rand Corporation's report about Paramount was released in 1982. There are two parts to this study, so we anticipate the first part being conducted in this current year, and the second half of the study will be completed next year. In addition, we're proposing a vision-mission values session. The $20,000 budgeted here will allow us to hold a series of sessions with staff and with the City Council. It has been a few years since we did one of these sessions, so we feel that it's time to do it again. The session will help the Council and staff to work together and to develop a vision for the community, along with a mission statement and established values for our organization. Next, we have included $25,000 for the class and compensation study implementation. This is a placeholder for now. If the study is done in the current year, we would have an appropriation to implement some adjustments as recommended. Also included in the budget is additional funding for the home security rebate program. We started this program this year with a $10,000 budget. The program has been a great success, and so we're recommending to increase the funding by $10,000, so more residents will be benefiting from the program. Next, included in the budget is $32,000 for a consultant for a grant application, so that we can pursue a grant for park development. Lastly, have you heard from David in a couple meetings before? We are trying to jazz up our hay tree, and so this is a placeholder for $10,000 to decorate, to include decorative lighting for our hay tree. We have added, in this fiscal year, one defibrillator at our community center. At this time, we are proposing to purchase five additional units to better equip other city facilities. The cost is about $10,000. Also included is facility maintenance and emergency repairs. The $96,000 here includes a long list of items that our Public Works Department handles, including electrical, plumbing, paint, pool maintenance, building materials, and vandalism repairs. Some of the emergency repairs include message board repairs that was after an accident, also clear water flooring that have been damaged recently, compressor replacement, sewer line repairs at city hall, boiler repairs at the pool, et cetera. Lastly, in co-enforcement, we're including additional $10,000 funding for litigation. This chart shows us the beginning and ending fund balance of each fund category. When we fast-forward, at the end of the year, our fund balance for the general fund remains at $12.7 million, which represents close to 50% of our operating budget. As for the restrictive fund and the water fund, we expect the balance to be at $7.5 million and close to $4 million. Now that we have done with the financials, I'd like to switch here to look at some fiscal If you recall, we budgeted over $13 million in capital improvement projects. Among those projects, here are a few highlights that we are adding using the general fund. One is the building security to the tune of $35,000. This is to secure the city facilities after a recent review by the Sheriff Department and our Public Works Staff. Also included are two carryover design projects for Bike Park and Village Park Hamburg Courts. They were budgeted in last fiscal year and completed in the current year. Additional funding for both projects is approximately $35,000. On the grant side, as we have transitioned our transit program to Long Beach Transit, we're proposing to replace the trash cans at bus stops totaling about $16,000. Also, we have received a grant for electric vehicle charging stations, so we're adding $73,000 to the budget. This concludes my reports for the mid-year budget. It's recommended the Council read by title only and adopt Resolution 19002, approving the fiscal year 19 mid-year budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Karina?
Move the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Giann?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hanson?
Yes.
Mayor Martinez?
Yes. Are there any comments from Councilmembers?
I have one. I guess I could, I don't want to steal your thunder, though.
No, I don't have anything.
Mayor, myself attended the County Supervisors Meeting last, or Tuesday, last Tuesday, but I'll let her expound upon that, so. We did get a nice scroll.
The Supervisor commended our city for all the efforts that we put forth regarding our air quality issues, and it was a nice presentation. I was ready to give my speech as I stood there, I'm thinking, "Oh, my goodness, the Supervisor is stating everything that's on my speech." So, otherwise, but we'll be sharing a video about our presentation in a few minutes. Are there any other comments? Nope? Okay.
In fact, we have the video ready to go. As you mentioned, Supervisor Haun did recognize us for receiving the Air Quality Award from the AQMD last year, and she gave out this really beautiful scroll, so I'll hand it to each of you so you can take a look at it, and we do have the video queued up and ready to go. So, here's for the public to view, it's a very nice scroll, and I'll pass it down as the video's rolling. Go ahead, Jonathan.
Is that on the website?
It will be.
Will be.
As well as the video. Oh, why don't you rewind, start it over, Jonathan, for the, so we can get the audio going.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm pleased to now recognize the City of Paramount for being named winner of the Model Community Achievement Award from our South Coast Air Quality Management District. Let's give them a big round of applause. And here, representing Paramount, we have Mayor Diane Martinez and Vice Mayor Tom Hanson. This award is given to public agencies and private entities who have delivered environmentally-friendly projects or help to improve the health of their communities. When Paramount was experiencing elevated levels of hexavalent chromium, the city took action and hosted town halls, community group meetings, and created a website to keep the community informed about these environmental issues. And they formed the City Council Air Quality Subcommittee to develop new manufacturing zone regulations. Their efforts also included teaming up with Southern California AQMD and other agencies, including our LA County Department of Public Health. This was actually one of the first big issues that I became involved with when I became new as a county supervisor and, of course, representing the great City of Paramount. In 2017, the City Council implemented a temporary moratorium on all metal-related businesses, and the Subcommittee worked to overhaul the city's industrial zoning regulations and recommended changes that eliminated many outdated practices and that produce odors, noise, and pollution. The City Council approved the finalized plan and the zoning changes, making Paramount a healthier place to live in the future. I want to congratulate my friend, Mayor Diane Martinez, Vice Mayor Tom Hanson, the whole City of Paramount for your efforts in helping improve the quality of life for your residents. Your award is well-deserved. I want to now invite the mayor to say a few remarks before I give you this gorgeous scroll.
Vice Mayor Hanson and I are pleased to accept this award from Supervisor Haun and the Board. The past two and a half years have been a time of education for us regarding air quality issues. We've worked tirelessly with numerous agencies, including the County and South Coast AQMD, to protect the health of our community while maintaining economic prosperity. So, on behalf of the City of Paramount, we are honored to receive this recognition from Supervisor Haun and the Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, did you want to say something?
No, I find she said it all.
She said it all, okay. Here we go.
Can kiss you, John.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Congratulations. Nice having you all here.
Okay, that's, that's.
The Chinese habit.
And one last comment, Madam Mayor?
Okay, that's, that.
We try to have it.
And one last comment, Madam Mayor. Actually, some very good news. You were awarded a Tree City USA.
Uh-huh.
You will see these going up around town. We were just notified on Friday of last week that we became a Tree City. So we're going to be doing a press release. We're going to put this on our website as well. And again, you will see this going up around town. With that, we got a nice plaque that I'll show you in a second here, but it's really an honor. We're going to be, Tree City USA has been around since 1976. We're going to be joining 3,400 communities around the nation that are Tree City USAs. So to qualify, you need to achieve four different standards. One of them, obviously, is to have a tree department or board, which we have, a tree ordinance on how trees ought to be trimmed in your, in your city, as well as a community forestry program for trees, which we do have a budget for that. And lastly, an Arbor Day observance, which we had our first one last year when we planted 180 trees. Well, this year, we're going to do, for Arbor Day, we're going to do a fruit tree giveaway during the Eco Friendly Fair. So that's one thing that we're going to be doing this year. So we're very proud of this, and thanks to Adriana Figaro and her staff for achieving this award.
Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, I adjourn the meeting to March 5, 2019, at 6:00 PM. Thank you.